Dear.
All rise. Hear ye, hear ye. The Hammond County Commission meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Cutshaw presiding.
Thank you, Harley. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We are gathered together for our regularly scheduled monthly meeting on this Thursday, April the 18th, 2024. I'd like to call on Commissioner Kyle Walker, please, to open us in prayer.
Bow your heads, please. Our Heavenly Father, we bless you that we've had this wonderful, beautiful day to meet here today. Give us the strength and the courage to make the decisions for our county, the people of our county, and all the citizens here of Hammond County, to make the right decisions on the choices that we have to make. Let everybody learn to get along here together so we can make those right decisions and understand that we always don't agree, but we will always try to do what you have guided us to do in your hearts and in our hearts. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Doty, would you lead us in the pledge?
Place the flag. Attention. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. County clerk, please call the roll.
Fourteen present.
Wonderful we have everyone with us tonight, and we shall begin. As we begin, for any visitor that is with us tonight, before we begin, our rules and our public comments guidelines are at the rear of the room if you need those. We do operate under Robert's Rules of Order unless superseded by our local rules. We have no one signed up for public comments. But now we will entertain item 2A, public comment regarding general and non-agenda items. You may approach, give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Lindonoee, 2343 Joe Stevens Road, Morristown. As a non-agenda item, I would like to encourage you to post your agenda and your packets on the Hammond County Facebook page. The City of Morristown does that. It's very helpful for a lot of people. You know, you post your meeting schedule at the beginning of the year, and by the time you get a couple of months in, most people have lost track. And so I think, and a lot of people don't know that they can find the agenda and the supporting information on your website. So I would encourage you to add that to your Facebook page, you know, two or three days before each meeting, committee meetings and commission meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on general and non-agenda Seeing none, we will move to item 2B, public comments regarding agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this commission?
Gwen Holden, 8150 West Point Drive. I want to talk about 10D. This has been going on for a long time. I called Mr. Curtis when it first started down in Nashville and talked to him. And he told me that the mayor had called him and talked to him too. Or he called the mayor and talked to the mayor. Anyway, they talked. And, you know, I think this is wrong. You know, freedom of speech is freedom of speech, and that's constitutional. And Mr. Curtis said that that was wrong to do that, to like sue people over something they wire or something they say, as long as they've got the proof. Mr. Curtis said if you're holding up a sign that's a big sign, or it's hiding other people or that other people can't see because of that sign, then that would be bad. But we just had on shirts and a place card. So, you know, I just, I don't get it. Maybe Jesus does, because I sure don't.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this commission? You have three minutes to do so.
Lindonoee, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. I'd like to talk on 10D, rescission of the vote that you took to sue citizens. The First Amendment is the bedrock of our republic: freedom of speech, religion, the press, freedom of assembly, and the right to petition our government for redress of grievances. A prior chairman made an absolute mockery of the First Amendment when in October 2020, he used law enforcement personnel to stop citizens at the courthouse doors, the people's house, and tell those citizens that they could not attend the commission meeting unless they turned their COAG shirts, Citizens for Open and Accountable Government, inside out or removed them or covered them. Shipley subsequently admitted he violated the First Amendment.
You're off the agenda, ma'am. Tonight's agenda is regarding the September 21 action. Yes, ma'am, you are out of order on this. Yes, ma'am, you are. We are discussing September 21st meeting. You are not on, that is off the agenda, what you're discussing. So please find yourself on the agenda or remove yourself.
Simply subsequently violated the First Amendment or admitted he violated the rights, but he lied.
Ma'am, I'm going to warn you one more time. You are off the agenda. Please find yourself on the agenda, ma'am.
And four months later, Shipley admitted he lied. Then in September 2021, Shipley, and I'm on topic, then in September 2021, Shipley and eight other commissioners voted to sue citizens wearing a simple piece of foam like this on their shirt or around their neck that said, "Save 30 million, one level jail, renovated Justice Center." And I hope we get Mr. Doty turned around.
Ma'am, I hope you do.
This is the poster board that shows the eight that vote, or nine that voted. Mr. Reed, Mr. Horner, Chairman Cutshaw, Bobby Hahn, Joe Huntsman, Jim Stepp, Howard Shipley, Tim Goines, and Eileen Arne Line. Now you're here today because those citizens said enough is enough, and they filed a lawsuit to vindicate not only their First Amendment rights, to protect and stop the pattern of violation of First Amendment rights. Each of you took an oath to support the Constitution. I hope that you will now study that Constitution, especially the First Amendment, and respect your solemn oath.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission?
Mike John Cox, 3121 Three Springs Road. Same agenda item there. I just don't get it. You know, y'all are rescinding it, so you're admitting, in my views, that you did something wrong if you're going to rescind it. I don't understand why everybody's so upset about it. I just wish you would rescind it, put it in the history books, right or wrong, you know, if it was done wrong, it's done wrong, and grow from it. I think everybody needs to put some big boy pants on and go on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission? Moving forward, I'm going to say one thing, that we did not, this is for the public to understand, we have not sued the citizens. We did not sue the citizens. We have not sued the citizens. Let's move forward. Item number three, appointment to Civil Service Board. This motion will be from Mayor Bill Britton. Sheriff Chad Mullins and the mayor are recommending the reappointment of Ron Spiller of Russville to the county's Civil Service Board for a term to expire, 8/31/2026. We will need a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doty, is motion. We have a second from Commissioner Horner. Is there any discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, this motion will be taken off the board.
Peggy Aver.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Yes.
Edna Green.
Yes.
Stan Harville.
Yes.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Peggy Howell.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Mike Richardson.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Kyle Walker.
Yes. And that motion passes unanimously. Next item, item 4A, Commissioner Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A is the approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we do have a second. Now, is there any discussion on the approval of the consent calendar items? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Fourteen yeas, zero nay.
And that motion passes.
Item 4B will be the regular calendar, and prior to approving it, we need to add item 10E7, which will be a paving program of the road department in the amount of $450,000. I think everyone has a copy at their desk of that $450,000. $441,000 comes from state aid, and $9,000 comes from an assigned fund balance. And I'll put that in form of motion.
Okay, let's clarify. We are adding to our regular calendar. State aid money is going to be, to increase appropriations for the state aid paving project on Old White Pine Road for $450,000, in which $441,000 is being covered by state aid, $9,000 being used for the highway capital project fund balance. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Long. Folks, this is off the board to add. We do have a second. Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
I have a question for Barry. I went out by and saw this road that you've done a prep job on.
Yes.
Looks good. It looks good. How far are you going to prep that on down?
We're going all the way to Jackson County line.
You're going all, the whole route?
Yes.
Okay. Next thing, in this $447,000, are you including that prep that you've already done?
No, that's the new asphalt, two inches asphalt.
That don't pay for the prep?
Nope.
How much would prep run on this?
Well, we probably, I don't know exactly, because we've done it with regular budget items, the asphalt and stone and the man-hours and the equipment and everything's been out of the regular budget, so I'd have to calculate, but I would guess around $150,000.
That's $150,000, about half of what a regular mile of paving would cost. So this hadn't been added to it yet.
This hadn't been added to?
To the asphalt. The prep work, you've already done $175,000 worth.
That's correct.
That's, so we look, if we do the, if it's going to cost us $450,000, and we hadn't paid for the prep, because the prep was done, this was just for asphalt, and if we could do, get this whole thing done for $9,000, according to, which is great.
Yeah.
For $9,000, but when you've got prep, you've not charged for it yet. That's got to be added to this nine.
Well, the prep has been charged. It came out of the regular budget. We pay the asphalt bill when we get it, and we pay the stone bill when we get it, and we pay the diesel fuel bill when we get it, and all that that's involved with that.
So we're not getting a brand-new road put in there for $450,000, because we had $75,000 worth of prep getting ready for that new road?
Yes, sir.
Figures aren't coming exactly like it seems like it should be.
Well, this money that's in the 176th fund is for capital projects, and so it just pays for asphalt, or y'all put some money in capital projects this past year's budget for equipment and vehicles and that type of thing. So this fund's used to pay for things like that.
Okay, that prepping comes out of that $750,000 you got in that account.
It comes out of the regular budget that was passed for 2324. The prep work did not. If we needed to contract work out and pay for that work separately to a contractor, we have done that in the past five or six years, when we spent about, I think about a million dollars on that, getting some help getting roads ready faster. But this preparation, it didn't cost us anything outside the normal budget.
Did you say around, that would have cost about $75,000?
We worked on it about six weeks, I believe is about, how long we worked on it.
It looks smooth. Don't look like it needed even paved it, does it?
The cracks and that type of thing, you know, if we could, if we'd done absolute best we could in terms of putting new pavement down, we'd get rid of all the old asphalt, because it can't do nothing but project cracks on through that new asphalt. We tried to correct any base failures, you know, foundational failures that we found. So, but when you pave over an old road like that, you can't never tell what's going to happen.
Well, if it's going to turn out great or not, until time tells.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Quick question, Mr. Barry, please. Are you going to contract that out, or us do it ourselves?
We send a bid out every year for the contract, for the asphalt, in-place asphalt, and we do an annual contract for that work. Yes, it will be contracted.
Thank you.
How long is that from after?
Two miles.
Two miles?
Yes.
Well, that normally costs you about $600,000?
We, I think the, based on, based on today's prices for asphalt, it's at least $180,000 a mile for two inches.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a motion. We have a second to add this to our regular calendar. This will be off the board vote.
Peggy Aver.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Yes.
Edna Green.
Yes.
Stan Harville.
Yes.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Peggy Howell.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Mike Richardson.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Kyle Walker.
Yes.
Okay, now the calendar has been amended. Mr. Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, item 4B, approval of the regular calendar items as amended, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the amended regular calendar? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nay.
And this motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. We have nothing in item five, item six, the approval of the consent calendar. I need a motion for that, please.
So move.
On the board. Let's let her catch up.
Sorry.
All right. We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Commissioner Howell.
I'm hoping this is the right spot.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. My question was 58120, the contracts for development that had, yeah, 58120, 507, heck of a lot of money right there, and contracts for development cost City of Morristown. I just wanted to know what that was about.
Just the chair, just the chair.
Yeah, it's, yeah, item 58120, contracts for development cost, City of Morristown Industrial Development Board. Tipping fees, TIFs, TIFs, okay. Tax increment financing, that's what that is.
What is it? TIFs.
TIFs. T I F.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah.
This is something that is paid every year, and a TIF is a tax increment financing is a method that developers can use in partnership with the local governments to finance projects. Like, I think we have five in Hammond County, and see, the first one was Barton Springs, the Food City development out at Barton Springs on Jaybird Road. Then you have Popkin Center, which is where the Food City is, at the old Popkin Fields. You have Massagill Springs. You have Wallace Farms. You have, and basically what happens is that the taxes, see if I can get this right, it's pretty complicated, but in the taxes that are assessed at when the agreement is reached are, let's say, at $100,000. And then, then through growth of the development, the taxes raised to $400,000. That difference, that $300,000 less what goes to debt service in our tax rate, is paid to the developer to pay off the financing. It's an incentive for developers to create commercial developments. Yeah, it's established in the state law.
The county gives that tax money to the city.
And it's paid, it's paid to, I think, the chamber, then the chamber writes the checks.
Mr. Green.
He answered what I was going to ask. Thank you, sir.
All right, you're very welcome. We have a motion. We have a second on the consent calendar. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, one nay.
And this motion carries. Okay, we will now move to item seven, and we shall recess as the Hammond County legislative body and open a public hearing for the Resolution 2412 to amend the zoning map of Hammond County, Tennessee by rezoning District 03, tax map 011, parcel 047.07, 5874, Fall Creek Dock Road, Russville, Tennessee, 37860, from commercial, or C1, commercial property to R1 residential. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, hearing none, we shall close this public hearing and reconvene as our Hammond County legislative body. Moving on to item eight, Resolution 2412 to amend the zoning map of Hammond County, Tennessee by rezoning District 03, tax map 011, parcel 047.07, 5874, Fall Creek Dock Road, Russville, Tennessee, 37860, from C1, commercial, to R1, residential. I need a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nay.
And this motion passes. Item nine, Justice Center Public Safety Committee Chairman, Chairman Horner, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9A, change order number 19 for $38,597.95, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Green.
I'd like to ask exactly what that entails. My memory has failed since last minute.
Your packet right there, but we can go over that.
Please.
It's the loading dock roll-up door, changes phase one, that Tony Pett described to us in a, for security, exterior soffit cladding, adding ceiling, and KL009, KL010, S119, and S120, and also reimbursement from them for gasoline on the job site office. Does that clear that up?
It does, but I'd like to reiterate, I can't vote for a change order, sir, but thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You have your vote.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, one nay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I was just checking the vote. This motion carries. Thank you, Chairman Horner. We will now move into the Finance Committee. Chairman Hahn, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 10A, ITB 2024-02, storage and filing system for the new Justice Center. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item for the storage and filing systems for the new Justice Center? Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, one nay.
And this motion carries.
Item 10B, renewal of the Hammond County Sheriff's Department's slip and mooring lease agreement with Cherokee Boat Dock LLC. I'll make that motion.
We do have a motion, and we have a second. Now, is there any discussion on this item? There is, at your desk, some additions to that that Executive Assistant Green has procured for us. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this, oh, excuse me. Commissioner Howell.
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, I voted no earlier, and I'm just not seeing it, you know, about this rescinding business, like a step backwards, and, you know, what's done is done, and...
Excuse me, ma'am. We're on item... Uh, we're on item one of Finance Committee, that, that item.
The, thank you, okay. My question on that, thank you. Right here, yeah. So we are using public funds. If I were to go out there and rent a boat dock, would my lease look like this, a slip? If I were to go out and rent a slip, would my lease look like this?
Chairman, touch on this, please.
Yes, ma'am, please speak. If you don't mind, rise, please. Sorry.
I hate sounding like a toddler than everybody else.
Sorry.
And again, I apologize. My name's Michelle Green, I'm the Executive Assistant to the Sheriff. And I'm the one that generally deals with the contracts. This is what I thought was basically the same contract as last year. When I spoke to Richard Baer, who was over Cherokee Boat Dock, he simply told me that there was going to be a price increase. He even said that he tries not to charge extra for the sheriff's office, simply because of who we are and what we do. But he said he really didn't have any option, he was going to send me the contract. When he did, I in turn sent it to Trish to put on your agenda to review. Now, only after I looked, well, actually, there was a correction, because when I glanced at it, he had, he didn't put the correct figures in. I reached out to him, he corrected it. And I know this is not where you're going with your question, but I'm just trying to cover the whole base.
Appreciate it.
No problem, glad to do it. When he sent me the contract, as I said, I sent it on to Trish to be put on your agenda. After that, I went back and reviewed the contract, and I noticed there were some differences in it. So that's what this email correspondence is, that you see. If you start at the bottom, because that's what the email prints out, you can see where I have emailed him and asked him to specialize, summarize the changes, since he didn't tell me other than just the cost. And then if you'll see, at the top of the page, that's where he responds. And if you'll note, the majority of things he says does not apply to the sheriff's office. So even though there were some changes in his contract, he has it in his writing that that does apply. So now, going back to your question, um, if you went and got a slip at the boat dock, and I will speak to this as best I can, I don't own a boat. I've never had a, you know. But I do know that it's easily accessible to the sheriff's office. I do know that he goes out of his way to work with us, and obviously, we need this boat. Now, my thoughts are, the way the contract is, because we are the sheriff's office, and he does want to work with us. We have, I hate to say special privileges, but I will. Because again, a lot of these items in his contract, as you'll see, did not, they don't apply to us. I hope that answered your question, is there anything else? Oh, and two, it is at a cut rate, even though, like I said, even though the price went up, which he said he wished he didn't have to do that. It didn't go up as far as it did for regular John and Jane Q. coverage. Is there anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's a glitch, who, um.
A glitch in what, I'm sorry?
Well, I mean, I suppose there's an accident. Who's held accountable?
Well, I don't know, can you tell me what, I mean, what type of accident?
I guess I'm worried about the insurance and the indemnity. I worry about.
That I can't speak on, because that would be more of a legal question. And I think we addressed this, if you go back and look at last year's records, I think this exact conversation came up, and it was, I think it was concluded that we are on the good side, the way he has it worded for us. Again, you can address Mr. Capes.
Indemnity to the extent of our insurance coverage, we have insurance. We have an umbrella, the county does, over all of our operations, including the Sheriff's Department. Whatever insurance we have, we can indemnify them if it were determined that we, the county, were at fault for something, which is not very likely. I know Sheriff's Department did it, or boat in progress, but they do it safely. And I remember you been on the late continuing there up there for the Sheriff's Department, TWRA as well. And this is a, you know, the question that you might have is, we're leasing the dock to these people, Hammond County is, but they're operating business, and so they are charging us just the same thing they owe.
Well, actually, a cut rate. It's cheaper for us than it is for regular public.
Are we protecting the sheriff and the glitches, or are we protecting the boat dock, I guess?
Well, I would say, I mean, I would say both. You know, our, there, we, we're not, as a county, as an entity, we don't indemnify anybody except to the extent of any insurance that we have. If something happened, that there was this injury and damage far below, above any insurance coverage that we have, we're not obligating ourselves to do anything like that, to pay anything over and above what our insurance coverage would. And then it has to be proven that we were at fault. So I, I don't think there's a real serious concern out there.
Are you complete, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Green.
My question as well is, when we had training on contracts in Knoxville, they told us that the county didn't indemn, and I'm not pronouncing it correctly, anyone. So if we are doing it up to the, up to the point of our insurance, why is it not in the contract? Business is business.
It's in our lease.
It's in our lease.
Should it not be in the contract, though, sir?
Our county attorney's there, I can't answer that.
Okay, would you permit him to answer it, sir?
This contract, this contract is with the Sheriff's Department and the boat dock. Our lease, we had a lease with the boat dock that addressed the indemnity situation. We're not going to indemnify, and we're not indemnifying anyone, except our insurance will pay, just like any other, any other liability claim, where Hammond County is at fault for something negligent, if a cruiser crashes into somebody, we've got insurance to cover that. I mean, that's not indemnity, it's just our insurance. And so indemnity actually means we're going to pay whatever it takes if they're suffering damages over and above. I mean, that's why we have insurance. We have insurance to cover any types of negligence in our departments, Sheriff's Department, any of them, Road Department, any, anybody, that's why we have our insurance. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna pay somebody over above our insurance and agree to it. Indemnity is an agreement. So a court can hold us liable to pay damages over and above our insurance. Let's hope that doesn't ever happen. But we're not ever going to agree to pay something over and above what our insurance covers. And our insurance company's not going to pay anything unless it's proven that we're liable for something. So, I mean, that's, that's all I can tell you about it right now.
Mr. Green.
I just have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did he review this contract, sir?
Excuse me?
Did he review this contract?
Did who review this?
Attorney, sir. Our county attorney.
I was not asked to review it, Ms. Green. I looked at some language, but as I understood it, this was between Sheriff's Department and the boat dock, and the same, same situation. You know, we have insurance, but I would not, your point-blank question is, was I asked to look at that contract? I was not. And so I have not reviewed it in depth.
That's what I asked, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
12 yeas, 1 nay.
And this motion carries.
Item 10C, Employee Benefits Consultant Broker, RFP, mark three, for all services, County Mayor to Negotiate Contract. I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the Employees Benefit Consultant? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
13 yeas, 1 nay.
And this motion carries.
Item 10D, Recommendation to Rescind Finance Committee Action, September 13, 2021. I make that motion.
We do have a motion, and we have a second to rescind Finance Committee action of September 2021. Commissioner Neesmith.
My concern about this was, this, this was passed, it's got the thing to do with clothing the people had on, flackers. And it was voted, that they would be sued, or others voted against it. And then Doty is only two on there now that's got it. But my question is, since 2021, that's, we never did sue them. We never did sue the people. But now, it's wanting to be rescinded, after three years, why do you want to rescind it now? Is it because that lawsuit is coming up in federal court in the next few days? Is that why we want to rescind it? And who asked to rescind it?
County Mayor gave you that explanation in committee.
He did last week, yeah, from attorney.
Yes, sir. It was by the request of our attorney, and we have heard multiple times from folks in the public that if you're not going to do this, to take it off. So I felt like it was the right thing to.
Good timing, wasn't it?
Could be.
Good timing, wasn't it, yeah.
Could be.
Yeah, it was.
That got you, Mr. Neesmith, you good?
That's all I've got.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chairman Catshaw. First of all, this should have never happened. To be threatened with lawsuit for something as simple as this right here. That should have been our rights. That should have been freedom of speech.
Ma'am, if you understand, we are rescinding that motion today.
You are, but three years too late, sir, it shouldn't have happened to start with. Freedom of speech is a constitutional right. I took that oath when, when you, when they swore me in for County Commissioner, and I think each and every one of you did, to uphold the Tennessee, as well as the federal constitution. So I want people to know, this is what we were threatened lawsuit over. And I was one of them that was standing there when they voted to sue. No, they did not sue. They found out they were wrong. And I'll go a step further. When I talked to Charles Curtis in Nashville, he told me that he had talked with some of them and told them that they could not do that. You should have done the right thing at that point, and we would not be here today. Now, in all things, I will not vote in this, because I am a member of that lawsuit. And it would be a conflict of interest for me, so I'm telling you ahead of time.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I might get, uh, Mr. John Cox said it well. What's going on? You wanted it gone, we're making it gone. Is it that you're afraid you won't get money out of it when it goes away? I, I don't understand. We already, we already formally did it as a statement from the chair that we weren't suing. There was one vote went through, and it didn't progress further. The man who made the statement, who's, this is over, actually was reprimanded by this body at his own request. I, I just, for the life of me, I don't understand why you're complaining about what you've been asking for, unless it's just financial. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments on this item? Commissioner Green, we have, let me check, see if anyone else is.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that needs to speak? Mr. Green.
As far as the money, it's one whole dollar. It's the, it is the right of people to have freedom of speech in this county.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm going to shut you down, we are not violating, and a judge will have to tell us that we violated that. I have not heard from a judge yet as far as your opinion that we have violated. I do not know that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this body has never taken up a lawsuit against the citizens of this county. Therefore, if a judge tells us that we were wrong, yes, ma'am, I will accept that. I will accept that, that has not happened. So your opinion, and this is your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let's take a vote on this.
11 yeas, 1 nay, one of say.
This motion carries. Thank you very much.
Item, excuse me, 10A1, Hammond County Department of Education School Nutrition Program Budget Amendment Number Two, an increase of $242,282.29. I make that motion.
We do have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Yes, sir. Have a safe trip.
So, we need to adjust our. Good day, Wayne. Commissioner Green, would you like to vote on this item?
Oh, I apologize, sir. I wasn't paying attention.
12 yeas, 1 nay.
And this motion carries.
13 is now present.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Item 10E2, Hammond County Department of Education Budget Amendment Number Six, with an increase of $97,860.81. And I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
13 yeas, 0 nay.
And that motion carries.
Item 10E3, Fund 101, Drug Court, $3,000. I make that motion.
We have a motion, we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
13 yeas, 0 nay.
And that motion carries.
Item 10E4, Fund 101, Election Commission, $2,402.59. I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
13 yeas, 0 nay.
And this motion carries.
Item 10E5, Fund 101, Jail, $102,000. I make the motion.
We have a motion, we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
12 yeas, 1 nay.
And this motion carries.
Item 10E6, Fund 122, Drug Control Fund, $48,000. I make the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
13 yeas, 0 nay.
This motion carries.
Item 10E7, which was added to our agenda, Highway Capital Project Funds, $9,000. I make that motion.
Okay, folks, this is off the board. This motion, um.
Set.
We have a motion, we have a second. Okay, for the, let me pull up my paper, one second. Yes, for our increase, the state aid projects, $450,000. We'll be increasing State Aid Program 441, an unassigned fund balance of $9,000 in this motion. We have a motion, and we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, let's vote this motion, please, off the board.
Daddy Abern?
Yes.
Chris Catshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Studdie?
Yes.
Ed Nogreen?
Yes.
Bobby Hawn?
Aye.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
And this motion does carry.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Hawn. Thank you, Chairman Hahn. We will now move into Public Service Committee Chairman, Mike Richardson, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Called Public Services Committee, surplus items, vote item 11A, Surplus Items for EMA. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second to surplus the items from EMA. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion carries.
Item 11B, Surplus Items for Cherokee Park, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on the surplus items from Cherokee Park? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
And this motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, that concludes our business for this evening. I have Mr. Howe.
Yes, before, Mr. Poole, before you leave, I was passing by, and there are two yellow lines down. I can't think of the road. Maybe it's today's road down where John Linsen, and that was all come by. They have those stripes down there, I appreciate it. And I wished I could remember where I was, but that's happening a lot. But I was on a road, and I thought, oh, my God, this has just been patched. Appreciate that, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Commissioner Green?
I'd like, with your permission, sir, to add a copy of the Constitution to be put in the mayor's office and to be included in the minutes of this meeting for anybody that wants to read it and check it out, sir. Please.
Your, your request is what?
To put a copy, pocket top, copy of the Constitution of the United States of America in the mayor's office, for anyone to be able to access and look at it that wants to. And I appreciate it being put in the minutes of this meeting.
Get it on your phone.
We, we have that, you'll have to contact the mayor's office with that. I'm not doing that. Next thing, is anybody else, all minds clear? Yes?
Just want to make you, make you aware, for the next week, we've got a week left, there's a citizen survey that we've done the last three or four years that is, there's a link on our Facebook page, and would want you to personally take the, take the survey and then get your family members and friends and refer as many people as you can to take the survey. We've used, we've had about tripled the number of responses this year than we have had, so it's a good survey. Gives us some information for the budget process.
Thank you, sir, it was on my to-do list. Everyone, please remember the 2024 Citizen Survey to help in our budget process, we would appreciate. One other announcement, our Hammond County Third Judicial District Recovery Court, they have their next graduation of folks coming out of recovery court. It's Thursday, April the 25th, 2024, at noon, First Baptist Church Fellowship Hall. If you could attend, please let them know it'd be an honor to be there, just letting everybody know that that is available to you. Are all minds clear? We ready, John?